Recording.
Um, we would like to call the Evergreen Cemetery Committee Work Session to order. It is Thursday, October thirteenth at five thirty-five King Downey. Uh, this is Lisa Holland and I am the current sheriff's. Do you want to call in?
Yeah, it's fine. Uh, Caroline Harris?
Here.
Oriso?
Here.
Linda Halsted? Not here. Lisa's here. Joni?
Here.
Matthew, absent. I'm here. Okay, call to the public? No call to the public, moving on. Approval of action. The following is to be discussed. Approval of action agenda for the special session on September nineteenth. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve that?
I made the motion to approve the minutes of the special session. On September nineteenth. I second that motion. Caroline Harris.
I don't know if you can because this is a work session.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure. Yeah, because a special session, you can vote.
But we, but we don't have to like.
No, these should be put on the next. Yeah.
Next work sess- next.
Because this is a work session.
Right, and you don't vote on any work sessions. So I've got to help find it correct.
I.
Special session, I think, is the one you vote on. Yeah, at work, it's just everybody sits around and talks about it.
I'm gonna bring the open meeting on, or I'm gonna read it.
Yeah.
Me too. Okay, so we got approval of that, so on to old business. Okay, discussion on update of cemetery stories, historic tours, Mike Anderson. Re.
Resource.
Resource.
Resource, I knew it wasn't resource. How can I get that corrected? So on to Mike now.
Um, a quick update, Joni and I met with him at the, at her office and had a great conversation. He's really excited on board, wants to help us anything, anything he can do.
That, that's awesome. He's my neighbor and he's got wealth of knowledge, it's crazy.
Um, along those lines too, I was talking to the city manager today, um, talking about some kind of line items so that once we do get to start the tours, the money goes directly back in. And they say that there's one there, it's just a matter of talking to, um, Carrie to get it made sure that it's lining just us when we do start the tours. I don't know if this would be the time to bring it up because it was old business, but I emailed them and talked to Nina on Tuesday to have two things added to this agenda that are not here. And I asked her to add discussion of grass and discussion of, of trees.
It may have been on me. I might, I had, it might, I might have grabbed the old one. If there was, because they send the updated?
No, but see, I haven't even seen an update.
This was from Lorena.
Right, but see, and I did this Tuesday to make sure that there would be enough time. Let me look real quick because I never received, have you guys received an updated one?
Nina was also off on Tuesday because Monday was a holiday and she's off on Mondays normally, so she had the next day off.
But I talked to her.
You talked to her?
I talked to a human in the office, right? Yeah, because she told me Lorena was off.
She is.
Yeah, and so I said, I just need this, I need to amend the, the agenda because I wanted to add discussion of the trees and the grass.
So we're gonna, I mean, the primary focus of the work session tonight is to talk about potential tours and.
Right.
I think the grass.
The grass did play into that.
Yeah, so we could talk maybe about it.
In.
In.
Like the same way.
Okay, and I'll just add later, okay, I just want to clarify for that. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sure I grabbed the wrong one.
No, it's your fault. Well, it was never sent out, so it was, whatever was that.
Okay.
So, back to, I guess, the story still. He, um, he had made some suggestions, right, of people, Carol?
Yes, he, oh, he was really excited and started coming into my mind. We have a separate tour of founders of Bisbee from like sports, famous sports people. Like, there's not people in there to make that kind of tour. Like, I didn't think of that eventually, like, you could click, click on a QR code and then have a tour. Because there's so many interesting people, but yeah, I have them listed here. And then I went and looked them up where they are in the cemetery and I still just need to divide them up.
Um, you might want to take a peek at these because these were part of the library that my mom had and she has an alphabetical. And so there's a picture usually of the gray stone and where it's located and history of individual.
Yeah.
So if you, I mean, and she's, I think she's pretty much having it put in the cemetery. So there's, these are all resources and they're alphabetical, like this is, obviously this is A to H. And so we've got that we can refer to if there's a particular person on the list, we can look up this piece.
Just to confirm, because even like there was, there were like, like Corretto.
There's, there's a couple of.
Yeah.
Couple of Coretos. What, they were cousins?
Maybe the dad isn't buried here, but his, the son.
No, I just thought.
Batiste was, you know. Then I started getting into it. It's C A, C A, that's what I messed up on, I kept saying Coretto. It's C A.
R, it's carbonated.
T T O, yeah, you have to use the website, you gotta have the right spell.
I think.
But you can kind of play with things, but mostly it worked, it was really cool. I liked the city's website, that was fun to play around with because it goes to GPS picture.
Yeah, but the only thing it doesn't tell you is the section, which is kind of a bummer. Because it's sectioned off, we have a section map, like, is it section forty-one?
That would be my next question because it's like, you know, I have to divide it up by B, C, I, J, K, L, O, P, but that's the.
See, like, here's one for Robert Campbell, it's got his birth, his date, his burial locations, plot.
Good, now we're getting facts, memorialized.
Well, they have the, well, we'll get on.
Says RH Campbell was killed by a cave and, and the shaft, the bizarre mine, one companion was also. So there's a little bit of historical information that for some of them is relatively small and for others is, like, large. So it just sort of depends on.
And there's been a new grave that's been added, um, just recently and that's Doug Graham's dad. He was big in the mining, uh, yeah, he worked.
Richard Graham.
Richard, yeah, I couldn't think of his name and Steve had put something about it today.
Okay, yeah, so there's, there's resources here.
Thank you.
But before we go down that path.
Yeah.
Let's, let's talk about the reality of the actual cemetery in terms of, do we think we can possibly have it ready to post tours by the twentieth and twenty-ninth? That is only a couple of weeks away.
So I talked to Steve today and I was lamenting about.
Is that Mr. Pocken?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Pocken, about the state of the grass because I had, when I was closing the other night, um, there was a gentleman there with his wife and they were just randomly cutting grass and collecting it and that was an issue. It's a great that people cut grass, but they don't collect it and it leaves it a mess, but they were collecting it. And, um, I had made this statement that Ten Town Shelter will cut if we provide the stuff. And Mr. Pocken today made the comment that the issue is getting our equipment back from DOC because they're the ones that have it and they're still using it. And I asked him, we have a budget in the cemetery. And I said, can we not use some of the budget for cutting grass, the, our DOC money, to buy more weed whackers, but those were to stay only for the cemetery? And utilize, and that would be up to you guys to suggest. So there's that potential.
Do we have the manpower?
Well, I talked to John today and, and Pocken was just like, well, you know, I don't know, two people, you know, you don't want to get for an hour, have to cut weeds for an hour, you know, but you don't know. I mean, there's, I don't know how many people he has there, I'll have to talk to John again. But, um, and they don't know what's going on with the DOC, you know, why don't they come back, the whole thing? Because he made the comment that DOC had knocked out the cemetery in a couple of days.
Had knocked what?
Had knocked out the cemetery in the past in a couple of days. And I said, that was interesting because we were told a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Right.
Eight-person work party would take two weeks.
Right.
They don't tend to done it, they have done it in a couple of days when they had hot shots and they had them lined up all the way through.
Yeah, so that was maybe, that's what it was.
That's probably.
Firefighter guys, yeah, the firefighter guys. But again, it's the issue of equipment and that's why I suggested, well, why can't we use our budget to buy equipment for the cemetery to use?
Which stays.
Just cemetery, it doesn't get used.
I talked to Ken and Steve about that after the meeting I had with you guys and I had more or less the impression that it's kind of. I didn't get that they were going for it.
That's interesting, I don't want to, you know, like, just right before.
It seemed like they're skeptical with them operating their equipment just because it's random people in and out of there.
That's my thought, some liability thing.
That's more the impression without saying it that I got from them more or less.
Okay, because I, I look for us to purchase the equipment for that specific reason. And number one, it gets used for something else. Or not be able to use it because we can't give the people what they actually need. It's a liability issue.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. If we can have our, Evergreen Cemetery Committee's equipment that stays for specifically the cemetery.
But we do have the, the forms for volunteers.
Yes.
So those can be signed by them, so that's not an issue.
Yes, if you know the workaround.
Right, so all you gotta do is get them to sign a release, is the word I'm looking for, it's a volunteer release form.
Or they gotta clear background, that's what that is, is releasing them to check that because you don't want to volunteer with the pool that should be there.
But then again, I asked about that and I asked Ashley and she, she was like, no. The only time they'd ever done background check was for people that were working with kids.
Oh, that makes sense.
Like the swimming pool and that type of thing and recreation parks and rec, but we could get that verified for sure.
So we were to, and I, I think this would have to be an item on our regular agenda for our regular meeting, but since we're talking about, you know, the preparation of the cemetery for tours, I don't know why there's an issue, we're just chatting about it. If we were to go down that pathway and were to approve equipment that was specifically for the cemetery, if it were to get destroyed, damaged. Do we have assurance that covers that or do we just simply have to replace it out of the cemetery thing?
Usually you can get an option to pay a little more for an extended warranty on stuff.
So that's how we do it, it's basically just an extended warranty.
Right, and you're only gonna get so many years out of those in general. As long as they're taken care of, they can go a long time and just replace parts, so.
So can we have that on our next agenda? But our next meeting is.
You can call a special session. Special session, that's where you can vote.
Request to add that onto the agenda.
Okay.
So next meeting's November.
Okay, so that brings us back to our question about, do we feel that we can move the cemetery? And we should have the committee have tours on the twentieth and twenty-ninth?
We have a week, we get DOC back, if I, and we're gonna say I can't get anybody else, worst case. So twenty-first DOC is back to us. Stereoclim's done, we're used to people squawking everywhere else, we can focus them for that whole week on DOC, on the cemetery. And I'll tell Matt, I'm telling you guys that and that's what we're gonna do. And they cannot be pulled.
So how do we know?
I think six days should be enough time and I gotta look at the calendar because they're not on the weekend or Monday, so we'll see where that falls to how many days we actually have.
Since it is an evening tour, one of the ways that we can get around it is that we choose the graves for the beginning tours to be only located in the areas that have been cut. And that's mainly the military, that's in the front section and the, and the front to the back section, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, while you tour, so you know what I'm talking about. So we handpicking from those, those graves. And if you figure a thirty-minute tour would be about ten graves. That's three minutes, that's the spiel, walking from grave to the next grave. Does that sound?
How do you feel about that?
For the tour, I think, I think we'd be okay. We wouldn't be able to pull together the other stuff, save for the map of the QR code and all of that. Just the tour itself, I think, good.
I've got like five kids that I want to volunteer.
Can it happen in two weeks with your kids?
Yeah, they're, they're waiting to find, they're waiting in limbo right now.
So we just need to get them their character, their script.
Well, that's, see, that's the thing, if they're, if we're doing a tour, one kid would learn about the ten graves. They would lead their own tour.
So each child is gonna have the entire tour?
Right, right.
Okay, and how many children?
Right now, I believe I have five, yeah. And then I was planning on volunteering, so I, so if we ran them in a fifteen-minute interval, if we have people, we could run them in a fifteen, start, say, student number one starts with their tour. You wait fifteen minutes, that's gonna get them to probably the third grade. I'm just saying, probably, more than that, might get them halfway through. Then the next person can go, then you're not gonna get that overlap necessarily.
Okay, so we feel relatively confident that we can pull it out by the twentieth and twenty-ninth, approximately ten graves?
Yeah.
So.
Do we just want to do half an hour or do we want to do forty-five minutes?
Five students and all of us chaperones kind of being there.
Well, I'm gonna be there for sure.
Yeah, we probably won't, that many.
Yeah.
You never know if somebody's gonna get ugly with the story and that is not happening at all.
But is half an hour long enough or do we want to do forty-five minutes?
How many minutes at each grave? So you got walk-up time in between the graves and to keep them kind of up at the front portion of the, and that puts less pressure on you guys to get all that bad part played out, so we can just basically say that it's.
Do we have ten graves, I guess, is the question? Yeah, up front. That would be the question. There, Mike, well, we've got Warren, we've got, I mean, we've got that one that I was chatting about, Madame whatever, anyway, she could be in there. Um, there's a bunch of those real fancy schmancy ones right there in the front. I mean, we could walk them, they could walk them straight up to the mausoleum. And, you know, you have, that's a straight cut, there's no grass to the mausoleum, so.
But can you see stuff once you get up there?
In the dark, you have only the lantern, remember, so they would hold the lantern to the, to the placard.
Maybe someone walking through.
Well, that would be the, the beginning spiel before you do it is, um, you know, you're staying on the, on the path with the, you know, with your tour guide, you are not step on the graves.
I mean, I think there's probably enough up front, I don't know if there's ten.
Twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh is how the days will have the DOC. So if you're on twenty-eighth, so.
I think we have to identify.
So if you do a spiel, a spiel is gonna generally run, if you're talking about somebody and you're reading and you're talking and then people might ask you questions, you give about thirty minutes, right, for verbiage?
Not much more than that.
Right, because two minutes to walk to the next site.
So that's just thirty minutes at just graveside, that's not a whole lot.
That's if you're doing, yeah, that's, that's not including the traverse thing, yeah, as I stuttered. So you may look at a forty-five-minute tour, but that's including everything, the walking, the.
I think that's probably.
More realistic.
I think so.
People will read at different speeds and walk at different speeds, so.
Right. But yeah, the kids are gonna be, the idea is whoever's doing the tour is that they can either read it or they can know it. I would rather they know it, preferably, you know.
It's gonna be harder for them to read and start. Unless they, I mean, they can do it on their phone, but.
Or under the, under their lantern.
They're disconnected. Okay, uh, do, are we, are we, yeah.
I'm almost ready to read off names of people who I think are, at least, either between that, you'll see the names where they cross, some are from Anderson, some are from.
Oh, okay.
So almost done, let me just check this last one, it's Maggie Letson.
You know, that's a good question, might as well, just in case. Because I think Ashley does, but. Easiest way to do that is on your agenda, leave yourself space and then just go under that topic. That's how you sit through it, create these spaces.
I know, that's sort of like trying to make, like, it's one of my noteworthy. Have to be last one, do a little better this time.
Okay, uh, this is, this is what I got, Angel Salas. Okay, I'm just gonna read through the whole list because it's way more than ten. So you guys make note, you know, or speak up, you can stop, I can tell you, I gotta look on those, gotta look at my notes. I don't have them memorized, but some of them maybe. Angel Salas, Sports, Chuck Eads.
He must have been there, was he not?
By the time. Anderson, Spokali, everyone back, he was head of the core site to make Bisbee a tourist. He took, he was dying and make it a tourist town. Frank Tracy, Maggie Letson, Muhheim, Joseph Muhheim, Ethel Berner, Terry Wheeler, Shattuck, Edward Shattuck, Elsie Tolls, Ella Melson Green, Carl Axel, Woody Bell, Carl Carlson, Leonard Madder, Lisa Chukovich, or Vuchovich, and Betty Bates.
Oh, yeah, there was.
Yeah, so, break it down to ten. George Warren?
No.
Uh, no, he isn't, and I did, I should have called out.
That's just for sure.
I mean, that's just, you know, it's like, oh, this was interesting because like you have that monument when you come in, but then when I looked at the Bisbee website, George Warren was somewhere else. Like, is his body buried somewhere else and that's just the monument to him?
So, I think he's at his monument.
Weird, like weird things like that. And then I'd be like, oh, I'm sure there's more than one person in it. Why didn't I have him here? Yeah, George Warfarther sits on our state seal. And what a great story.
We also have, um, the unknown soldier and we also have the shot by Indian. You know, we have those guys. We have, like I said, Madame Frish, I can't remember her name, I'll have to look her up. Frishlon or something like that, she, she was a socialite and her daughter, so they date back. Fushere, that's her name, Madame Fushere, she was born in eighteen fifty-one and died in nineteen thirty-seven.
Do we know where she's buried?
Yeah, I know exactly where she is, because I happen to be driving slowly. So when you're coming up, let's say, the first gate at the mall, the very first street, hang a rake and drive down in the military section, she's right down in there, about the middle, and I don't know why she's in the military section, she's right on the road at the military section, top of it.
So, and, so. I'm just thinking that we want to have, whoever we pick, whatever gravesites we pick, there wants, there should be some remarkable aspect to the grave. Especially for us to start.
Yes, something.
She was a socialite. The one thing that caught, her name caught my eye, I just thought, Madam, I thought, I was thinking a Madam, you know? But it's Madame, apparently, and there was a thing in the paper I found in like, um, in a history, you know, what do you call it? Ancestry dot com, it was attached to her grave information. And her daughter came, came back from Boston, was a big socialite and, and they made this circuit, so I just, I don't know, I just thought she sounded interesting. I don't know if your mom has her, the internet here is horrible.
How do you spell it?
Um, hold on, it, hold on, let me get this stupid internet turned off here, hold on.
Oh, Wi-Fi? Wi-Fi is copy?
No, I don't, I don't want your Wi-Fi, sorry.
No worries.
It holds me up, um. Yeah, so those are for sure, the Muhheim, the Shattuck.
And Muhheim.
Okay, just a minute.
And you're Sharon Rossell?
She's all over that Muhheim, she did the Muhheim House. Okay, because that, that whole tour was a fundraiser for them.
Right.
And they already dressed up and somebody wrote their scripts or they were actors, you know, somebody has their.
Well, there was stuff before that too because the kids all dressed up.
Like, I was hoping, maybe they already kept them. That'd be a miracle and then we just, you don't have to do a bunch of work.
My mom probably has them somewhere, I just can't think.
Okay. So I'll call Sharon if you want.
F E U C H E R E. F E U C H.
Yep, here she is.
Oh, I'll be bad.
Oh, she has real photos of them.
Oh, yeah, of their, of their gravesite. It just have, it doesn't, doesn't. Yeah, it doesn't have any information about her, it just has a picture of her vest.
So I, I'm trying to think, I, when I pulled it up, I don't know if I pulled it off the gravesite, when you pull it, there's extra information. The internet here is not being very cooperative. But, um, there was a newspaper article about her. This is in billiongraves dot com is where I got it from. And that's where it was talking about her being a, her daughter's a socialite, it was her wedding that they had, they came all the way back from Boston and, I mean, it just, so she was somebody in society is what it was.
Yeah, so I think we have to find characters, we have to find gravesites and people that have something interesting for the guides to talk about. I mean, there has to be some significance to why you're touring them to that particular.
Is Mr. Cookley buried in Evergreen?
Oh, I don't, that's a really recent one.
Mr. Cookley, last ten years. Yeah, he was with the Paton, yeah. He was a lot, one of the last Patons.
I don't see him in here.
He might be at the other cemetery though.
They may, well, they may have buried him in a.
Oh, that's true. Because I, I know they did a memorial for him there, yeah.
Pretty amazing. Yeah, here's George Warren. Okay, so I think, so I think we have W's, right? I think we have Warren. And you probably have Shattuck and Tolls.
Is that the lady, the superintendent lady?
Yeah. So I think my soul's got to go to those. What was the first name, was it Angel Salas?
Salasie was a.
She's got a new sport.
Baseball?
Baseball, I think, it was baseball with Mr. Angie.
And most definitely Annie Henry for her because of League of Their Own, that's the character.
Is she buried?
I think so, I thought she was.
She was, she was a veteran.
Yeah.
So she may be buried out in the military cemetery as well. She was in the Navy?
Well, can, you guys pull up your.
Are you talking about Betty Bates?
No.
I was talking, oh, Betty Bates is who I meant, not Annie Henry.
Oh, Bates.
Bates.
B A Y S.
Betty, B A Y S.
Mary, oh, here's a Bates, but this is a different Bates.
Because, yeah, Betty Bates was the one.
Mary, we saw Bates, there's a lot of Bates.
Bates?
B A Y S, yes.
B A Y S, okay, and there's Pearl?
Yeah, that was her.
Who's in a smashing picture of this uniform from, it's like World War One. Mary Moraga Bates?
Okay, here we go.
The Bates family history?
Let me see if I can, public works, where's the, what's in Evergreen Cemetery, there you are. Click here, let me see if she is, I have the site up now, coming up.
Oh, here she, it was Beatricey Betty Bates Schuler.
Yep, that's her.
Okay, so we've got something on her, we've got a fair amount of.
Oh, yes.
History on her and her, it looks like her picture's on her vest though.
Yes, and she is just, she's on the main road, she's on the same road as Madame Fushere is.
Right.
She's just down from Madame Fushere. As a matter of fact, she is in the military section, just off of the, oh, the Ice House. Oh, it's related, everybody.
So, yeah, she's, I think that's good and it's, uh, somebody who was relatively famous in, uh, in the athletic field, as well as a female.
Yes.
And plus, she, the character that Gina Davis played was loosely based off of her.
So, so if we have Betty Bates, you know, you're almost, yeah, we're getting her in here. So we've got Betty Bates.
George Warren.
George Warren.
Shattuck.
Shattuck.
Muhheim. Uh, who else did you have?
We need to have, did you say Tolls?
Tolls, yes, Tolls, that's five.
Carlson.
Carlson.
Carl.
Carl Carlson.
I have, I have a book.
Yeah, who is Carl Carlson?
Carl Carlson. He was the first to die in the pandemic.
What, first to?
To die in the pandemic, that's right, I forgot about that.
In, he was sent to the war wine and died, of course, in the train camp and then they shipped his home back.
But then who was the first one?
Because they wanted to keep it sealed because they didn't want to bring the flu here.
But who was the first person to die in Bisbee? He brought that up, that was the next name after him.
The first person to die?
In Bisbee from pandemic, from the, from influenza.
Oh, are we talking, uh, the Spanish, Spanish?
Spanish flu, yeah, sorry. Uh, who was the name after that guy? Because Mike talked about him.
Elie Kovanovic? No, that was a guy who died in the sailor, I don't, I'm not, I heard, yeah, different from you, Joni, I just wrote down. In my notes, Carl Carlson was the first to die, the first Bisbian, he died in twenty-three. But I don't know, you know, from somebody who died in Bisbee except for the children, you know, that whole thing.
There's also those, the two kids, um, they died and they drowneded in the San Pedro. That was pretty tragic, yeah.
Yeah, I wrote that, that was in the newspaper.
Yeah, that's the one that Juliana dressed up as when they did all the, your mom and my mom, Adam, all dressed up for that reenact, not reenactment, but for the represent. for that reenact, not reenactment, but for the representation. Well, they did, they had dead people in cribs, it was kind of cool, though. Yeah.
Okay, so how many, do we have so far? For shirts?
Five. Five?
So Chuck Eads was a mayor?
He was, for a period of time.
Do you want to, did we want to throw Chuck Eads in there also?
That's great.
Yeah, might as well. He's a more modern, not necessarily the-
Incorporating some folks from different backgrounds. There is one particular, um, headstone that's really, really cool, let me see if I can find it.
The other one that's a pretty cool one is the mausoleum. And I can't think of the family, who they are, um...
It's not Dugans, is it?
No, Dugans, a little mausoleum, the big white one, my dad and my mom can tell you right, like that. Um, God, I can't think of their name.
Let me find it, there's one.
It's on the top, isn't it?
The very top of the first street.
I have this fuzzy mental picture.
It's got a really cool placard. But, um...
There's some, I mean, there's some really old, really old headstones, not, not in the comparative decades, but for our little cemetery.
Yeah, I think pretty headstones would be cool.
Well, that's one of the things too, that's unique about, about the cemetery, is all the representations of all the organizations, there's the Woodmans, there's the Elk, there's the Royal Order of Moose, there's, um, the Benevolance, um... The Masons, there's the, um, God, who's the other one? But as you go along, and the headstones are indicative of, like, that the wood, the woodcutter, there's like chunks of wood on it, you know, and then, you know, the Elk. There's the Elks and the Moose, so those are two different fraternal organizations, so there's a lot of that, really cool stuff up there also.
From the Old Elks Club.
There is that. There's one, I don't, I would have to look at some of these, because the pictures that are here, they may not look like that anymore. Because some of them have been vandalized, so it's really-
That's true. Right in the front, though, when you first come up the first street, there's a lot of very, on both sides of that, that first crossroads, that's the main area where you have a lot of your really old statuistic, um, headstones.
Right, there's, there's ones that have like the, the wrought iron, the round, um-
Right, but they've got the real beautiful, there's one that's got the most beautiful marble, and you know that thing costs a chunk of change. There's also right in that area is that family that they lost about three kids, three or four kids.
Yeah, and those kinds of stories where you've got, as tragic as it is, it's interesting from a tourist perspective to hear about, like, the typhoid that run through the mine camps and just kill, you know, five of your eight kids, I mean, can you imagine? Losing, like, being stair steps, like that, I mean, just horrendous stories. And like the little ones that got drowned.
Yes. Another aspect of it too, is you have in one section is all your, um, Serbians.
Oh, yeah.
The Serbians are located in just the one area, and then there were some pretty, um, important Serbians that were buried up there.
Yeah, as you're looking through these books and you see headstones that are really quite remarkable, it's not the ones who were-
Is that another one of?
Yeah, there's a, um, there's a-
Johnny, just put that one.
It's a Pokéstop in the, hmm? There's a Pokéstop in the cemetery that's up, it's, uh, it's so pretty, it's, uh, crossed with Mary Huggins.
Yep.
Upway, but it's kind of high up there.
So, one of the real fancy is Sam Bolstein. Born in Russia, um, his mother was born in Mexico, um...
Is that one too?
These are one of the ones that has a little, it's fancy. Headstones.
Yeah, some of the headstones are really pretty cool. Oh, for the next meeting, would you please put down, um, I would like to kind of share the preservation plans for the Evergreen Cemetery that I ran across from past communities.
Oh, oh, cool.
Build on what has, because I think we can see kind of what past communities were thinking.
I like that, thank you, Lisa.
So we've got, I think we've got two or three of these that we can maybe look at.
So next meeting to?
Yeah, to discuss, to share the, the preservation plans, past preservation plans of Evergreen Cemetery. Yeah, they're, they're pretty, pretty interesting. Okay, let me see, there's... See, like, here's, this is a, is a really, it's a pretty headstone.
Yeah, with the little baby lamb.
Baby? Chipped out, that picture.
Sicko.
So disrespectful. I like this one, I think this is a beautiful headstone, a baby.
I've seen other ones with babies on top, but that's so pretty, and then aside, is that one still there?
I think it is, and look at this one.
Lovely.
Yes, that is, and that's by the mausoleum.
Right, by the mausoleum, okay.
You know, kind of highlighting some of the more picturesque, even though they have a really fleshy stone to go into. And here's, Johnny, you were talking about the different sections, the International Order of the Otto's?
Yes, that's another one I forgot about.
And the symbolic nature, and there's some handouts in this one also about kind of what they put on gravestones that are symbolic of nature, like the grasping hands, the cherub, this one had three interlocking, like, chains, like links. And that was the symbol for the International Order of the Otto's, so those kinds of things that you can tell, bring tourist attentions to, or, or people that are touring, and say, you know, draw your attention here to this particular symbol, this is what it means, you know, those kinds of things, I think, are fascinating, that's kind of why you go to cemeteries.
Here's one that's kind of cool, that has a really cool headstone also, his name is Daniel Dan Ankins, H-A-N-K-I-N-S. He came here from New Jersey, um, he came out here to be employed by the mines, he married an esteemed young woman. Uh, they moved, um, to New Mexico, and then he reached Bisbee in February of eighty-one. What he remained until he died, but he was employed first as a timberman, and then he got injured, and once he got injured, he came, went to the mercantile business, and he was the proprietor of Hardwood Cigar and Confectionery Store on Sixth, Number Six Main Street. And, um, he finally retired three years before his death due to failing health. He had acquired many valuable mining claims and was reputed to be in comfortable circumstances.
Interesting.
But, uh, but, yeah, he was a, what do you call that?
That's the one I was talking about. See, they checked, they, this is what they, you can see this kind of stuff is what's happened in our cemetery. And it's like, look at this, the family have the pic, the picture of the child embossed on a piece of porcelain. They make it long, it should be. And you can see where they've done it in different, it's a bit, you know, just, it's so disrespectful, right?
I know, um, we had somebody else really upset coming in saying that she thinks there's kids going in on bikes and stuff, or doing, she was, her son's grave, which is put within the year was trashed.
So, just to enlighten you guys what's been happening in the last couple of weeks, I don't know if that told you. So a couple of weeks ago, my dad cut out my case, because he said I didn't lock the last gate. And I'm like, oh, I locked the last gate, and I thought, oh my God, I'm losing my mind. So I just kind of blew it off, well, the night before last, we went to watch the cemetery, and I drove in the gates, walked a gate behind me, did the circle, came down, and the gate was locked already. Backed up, drove to the last gate down by the Sunday, gate was already locked, I had to get out, let myself out, and I thought, it could have been my dad, because he would have been dead all three, so I asked my dad, and he's like, no. I went to put my daddy's on, I went to bed, so there's an F-one key locked down that somebody-
So, can you add a lock changed?
But see, F-one, it-
That's the key to the city.
That's the key to the city.
Well, that's scary for the city.
Well, there's F-one, F-two, police have the F-two, but yes, it is.
Because they can get into pretty much all city buildings.
If we have to, yeah, that's not good.
That's not good, yeah, I mean, for obvious reasons.
So you guys lock this, you lock it?
Lock it, yes, and we locked the locks, when my dad opens in the morning, so it was still locked. So someone has to have a key to be able to-
I really hope that was just the police and somebody thinking-
But it wouldn't, but why would it, it would have, it wouldn't have been like, oh, you locked somebody in there, because I hadn't locked it yet. What had happened was I went in there, and there were four people, and I didn't want to run them out, so I went to dinner. And then when I went back at seven o'clock, it had already descended, I mean, it was dark. And that's when I went in the first gate, locked it, and then when I came down, I thought, hey, the gate's already locked, and so it shouldn't have been.
See, and part of the, part of the tour, part of what the students should talk about is the respect that one should be showing to the gravesites. And, and even talking about some of the damage that has been done, highlighting it and say-
You could make that part of the tour.
Exactly. Awareness, right?
Freedom of awareness.
That, I think, is, is really, oh, here we go, this, is this the mausoleum, little joint area?
It's a little, big white building?
Yeah, R-O-S-O.
Rosic, yes, Rosic, that's Rosic, yes.
So that is a pretty straight shot, just right up the road.
Yeah, but it's the very top of the road.
So, who's got the R's, I think, Marisol has the R's.
Yeah.
Rosic, it's R-O-S-O-P.
Another one is Hubbard, the, um, he, the Catherine died in Kansas, and they brought it all the way back to Bisbee in there.
Can you imagine hauling a horse?
And there's a little history on her too.
It wasn't exactly refrigeration, man.
And there was some infants in turn, the Hubbard, that might be that one grave that has the multitudes.
So Johnny, you're talking about like, uh, Woodsman and all that?
Yeah.
There's several pictures of gravesites that are really-
Yeah, they're phenomenal, the headstones, um...
So, Blavich, Blavich, Blavich? It's B-L-H-E-O-B-I, it's like a C or, I'm not sure, C or a K, anyway, it's, it's- They, that's a neat looking headstone, if the image is still in.
Okay, yeah, I like that, because then it gets the Serbian, like, section.
And then there's Joe Halavsky? Where the cross is like, logs with the, I, I, yeah, super cool looking headstones. So there's the one.
So another thing to look at too, is some of our older, older, like, these oldest gravesites, we have one here that's nineteen oh-eight, that's one that's very- Yeah, he was caught in a cave in in nineteen oh-eight, so he's one of the early variables.
If we have, um, if we have, if we select gravesites, even if it's not with this one, but in the future, if we select gravesites of miners that were injured or killed, I have a book that's a compendium of all of the miners that were injured, it has their names, it has their, I mean, I have relatives that are going there, you look, it's alphabetically attached their name, and it'll tell you, so-and-so was killed in a cave in on some such a date, they extracted him, you know, you'll, you know, I mean, it, it goes to kind of the synopsis of that particular person, so if we elect to, um, a miner's grave that was killed in a cave in or in the mines, we might be able to flesh out the story using that book. John Benko.
That means some, yeah.
B-E-N-K-O.
B-E-N-K-O, yeah, that's a family, that's. There's so much that went out.
Jesse, we would have, uh, Kral, K-R-A-L-L. Uh, New Barrens. Oh, here's this, here is this. Cool. He's here, this one is a really neat tombstone, it's got father, mother. Isn't it the last one? It's in somewhere.
All the flowers are in front of the tombstone.
Johnny, do you have a test in case?
I'm gonna hand it down. Are we talking?
The one that hasn't adorned in the cemetery. Really, I mean, some of the, you know, you don't often go slowly through, you go around Loveless Graveside, and then, but there are some really beautiful gravesites up there. And the grass, too, um, looking around it. Friendship Francis Cummins.
That would be an easy one to find, I mean, just look, but- That, the Donum, the top's pretty. How HOWE was also another big name who surveyed the town side of Bisbee and the, so...
Oh, Johnny, guess what I found? Is that in the middle?
She was my mother.
There is one, uh, Asian American gravesite in our, in our cemetery.
One, down one.
Really? It's kind of on the corner.
Ka Chen.
Okay, is that way of the border?
Yeah, and they were, he's related to the guys that have the restaurant.
So, uh, today, Coq, you guys were talking about Bisbee and then Evergreen Cemetery.
There's only one.
One, that's it.
Remember the Japanese guy you were talking about, like Anderson was starting out with?
Japanese? I don't think he-
Where I grew up, in Valbe, Alaska.
He's up on the divide, he's on the service.
They actually separated Asian graveyard.
I've read that in the survey. Yeah, extremely segregated. But, uh, there's, it used to be on the books, and all, all the Chinese had to be out of town by sunset. So Harry Mitchell had told me years ago that there's this old, old Chinese cemetery up on the ground.
That's what I was wondering, if they had a completely different site, because that's how it was where I grew up.
Yeah.
Uh, the person who was killed by Native Americans is Jacob Bowman. Oh, wow.
And he was shot by an Indian?
He was killed by, he was killed by, uh, Native Americans, yeah, killed, it says, his headstone says Jacob Bowman. Can't read something, it, it looks like native, uh, big Tennessee T in it, killed by Indians, April, something, eighteen ninety-nine? It's forty-three, doesn't say how, I'm sure if we found his history and learned a little bit more about it.
Agrem is one of the, the old, that looks like silos, looks like a missile.
So how many, how many names are there yet, five still?
Shattuck, Carlson, Bays, Warren.
So you do want to do Carlson?
Oh, I wasn't sure, I thought that was one you guys wanted.
You guys are okay with that?
What, what was the name of the guy?
He was a soldier who was sent, uh, died, he was a first Bisbian to-
Pandemic.
Died of the pandemic.
I think that's kind of cool, and it's timely, considering the way it came through.
Yeah.
So, if you were, and I think what we also need to ask ourselves is, if you were going on this tour, would you find that particular tombstone or story related to the person who's buried there, interesting?
Here's the one that he was talking about too, he had got knocked out, the cable didn't fail, Roy Jacobs. He died in a mining accident, but it wasn't due to the cable failure, he got knocked out of his cage and fell to his death in the mineshaft. He went to the five hundred level, uh, to ask Frank McCade for a chute bar. As he was being hoisted to the four hundred level, the chute bar caught the timber shaft and knocked out the cage and fell to the bottom of the shaft. It was determined he had broken his right leg, crushed his ribs, and suffered other internal injuries. It occurred early that night, he died from his injuries at the Copper Creek Hospital at two P M on the night, he was twenty-eight years old.
Who does he?
Did you say the word? Roy Jacobs.
Roy Jacobs.
J-A-C-L-B, and your mother has written in here, Seven Bells Mine Accident.
See, that's, that book is called Seven Bells, because that's what they used to do when they had a, right? Mine, mine incident, all right, I'll, I'll check and see if there's anything more that flushes that one, if we want to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, this is ten, if you make one of the stops just cemetery protocol, um, in a damaged grave.
Yep.
That's one stop, and then George Warren, and then Shattuck, Neuhain, Carlson, Betty Bays, Tolls, and Eads, you're already at eight.
That's, that's a fair number. For those students to just come and see.
And for us to make sure that the graves are cool, and, yeah.
And as far as Carlson with the pandemic, I think that's interesting, and you could also segue with where the influenza actually originated, which should have been the Kansas flu, not the Spanish flu, because it got blamed on Spain, because they didn't, they were the only ones openly talking about it, because nobody else in the world wanted to admit that they were suffering a pandemic.
That's interesting. It was published in Spain, and only because Spain was neutral.
Yep, they're neutral, and so they got the blame.
They could print anything they wanted, everybody else was under wartime, and it was that sort of thing.
This is a cool looking grave.
Yeah, so you know how you guys were talking about doing different topics? I think a, a great topic, if, or in daytime, we didn't have the evening tour, on a weekend, would be the architectural tour of gravestones. I mean, just looking at some of our-
And the symbolism with that stuff too.
This could be the whole tour, and you find these graves, and you go to those places. Yeah, okay, I already wrote, I'm writing my ideas down, because that's gonna get, when we get the Q and A.
So it's fun, and then have the-
So let me say that, uh, architecture.
So that they, you know, that they're looking for specific symbols.
Yeah.
As they go, you know how, you know how you do, you go on a tour, and you can check on, I found that, I saw this.
Scavenger.
This is what I have so far, interesting headstones, a miner tour, famous miners, a sports tour, a founder tour, an art symbol tour. This is what I have so far, interesting headstones, a miner tour, famous miners, a sports tour, a founder tour, an art symbol tour. And then also I W W, that whole history, if you just sort of care about I W W, do that tour.
There, and there's. So if we can.
And, and women, and Hispanics, and other underrepresented people.
And a Chinese person.
Break into these categories, that we, it would be easier to give it to.
Yeah, then we can really give it depth and breadth, right? And then it makes it for the visitor that comes, it's really tailored to their interests.
Right.
So for this particular tour.
We gotta get back to Halloween.
This tour, are we gonna focus on these eight?
I think so, just go with it and I'd rather be shorter than longer.
I would too, because then.
Things always take longer.
I'd rather do two.
Exactly, and. Rules will be out.
Right?
So.
There's a lot of ones too.
So. Joni, can we give these names, I was under the impression we give these names to Anderson and he will write the spiel.
That sounds great.
I think he will, yeah.
Didn't he ask you, should it be written in which voice?
Right. We can ask him if he'd be willing to, yeah, because.
Yeah, if he will, if he will write in character, like he's interviewing the person to have them tell their story. I think that's always a really interesting and fun way for you to get the story because it kind of reads life into the character. Whoever they might be, you know, like if you suddenly became a pulse, you take on the character and you. Great?
Yeah, or, um, what had you mentioned, Joni, you wanted it to, the kids to just say facts and.
Well, yeah, to talk about the history behind it, yeah.
So they're not gonna act like the person, is what I'm saying.
You don't want reacting to the part, because he's gonna write it, is he writing it in just factual tone or is he gonna write it?
He asked.
Yeah. And I was just, yeah, I was saying, you know, for them to really, I don't know, that was just some idea I had.
I mean, if I'm a visitor, I would prefer to hear from their perspective, not the student's perspective, but from story as if I'm telling, if I'm a deceased person.
Right.
I want my story to be told.
Right.
In my voice.
Okay, define what you mean by your voice.
So.
I was 28 years old and going up the miner's shaft.
That's what that's telling you, the history of it, yeah. That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Can those kids pull that off? Or is that too much for them to go from character to character?
I mean, if they're given the information, I don't see why it would be.
It's okay to use QR, it's okay to read off a card.
Yeah, I don't see why it would be an issue, no.
I mean, I would have a field day. Because I like that kind of stuff.
Right.
But falling into character would be super fun.
I don't think it would be a problem.
Okay, I think it'd be fun, I mean, you can ask them to see.
They'll come and mix them up. They're so cool.
Sorry. Um, so on that, on that one grave where they, if they start and talk about cemetery protocol and damage.
Okay.
And they talk about the cemetery rules and the results of the horrible.
Picture.
And, um, and then maybe start it off with an example of, you know.
Um, which is the one that you want them to go to that's, that's all screwed up, that used to be so pretty? And then on the tour, they show them the four pictures.
Right. We can make duplicates of the four.
I think that will be where they can even go, yes, give this spiel.
Talk about that. Okay, all right, so, all right, let's, let's, let's talk about maybe duties, how we're gonna divide this out.
Yes.
Your line, right? Okay, so the before, the before and after pictures, you want me to get those? Um, and after the grave, although I need to go through if mine is going to be accessible, a before and after shot.
And that would be, that, you know, that would be a s- a s- place where people could stand and look and then that's where that would be that station, right?
Okay. Joni, is there one particular glaze out or one that you know, one that just looks like it's, I mean, it needs to be visual, so maybe it's one that's up a little bit higher, but it's really been mistreated.
Not on top of my head.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to take some time and maybe go up there and find.
And you drive through tomorrow?
Yeah, I can village one. Yeah, I'm gonna be over here, Stairway.
Oh yeah, that's true.
We got Stairway present going on tomorrow, but I can come a little bit earlier and each of us goes up there, each has to find one that maybe represents really what's she got.
Right. Yeah, and there's some right there, when you first come in that first gate, you get past the ice house and you go past the first road, you're gonna see there's quite a few damage, damage. Not just the headstones, but the cages, the fencing, the whole thing, there's a lot of damage right there.
Okay, I think that would be a good thing for them to start working on.
So now the kids are gonna be walking and with the people and then they'll hit, so that was my next question, so there's solar lanterns that I have that we could carry on the hook and the kids, if you're doing it in the evening, then the kids could put the lantern on the graves and speak about it. But I was thinking about putting something like PVC, like a tube in the ground, so they could put the lantern, so it hangs and illuminates the grave and then they could do a spiel. Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah, so I was gonna, what is it, what's the rule about driving something into the ground?
It would be outside the grave.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be like at the foot of the grave and have the pipe long enough so all they have to do is put their stick in it and then it would lean. It would jet it out across the grave and illuminate. I'd have to work on the angle of it, because for most of those graves, there is a small amount of space, either to the side or at the foot, generally, always at the foot.
And I think the voice got sent.
They put the flag stuck, yeah. And that's what kind of gave you the idea, right? Voice got fired and I thought, wow, we could just, the kids could put their lan- you know, or the tour guide, I guess I could put my stick in there with my lantern at the end. And those lanterns are supposed to last six hours when you, um, put them out. And I have two or three already and they're about this big, but I need to take them and up there next time I close when it started and test them.
Test them to see.
Yeah, see how, because that's the, lantern is the whole thing about it, yeah.
All right, um, so we've got our, our eight people and you will send us a list of.
I'll, um, put this together and it was, was it okay how I emailed everybody, was that breaking?
Oh, yeah, what is that about though?
Um, okay, so the open meeting law, so what you can do is you can, you can disseminate the information, but at the end of the email, put, but do not put it in capital letters. Do not, do not respond to this email.
Oh, good.
Um, if you have any questions or response, email the cemetery chairman, Lisa Holland directly.
And then I can, I can send out, like, I can respond to one person, right?
You can respond to two, wait, what's, you have four members? What's a quorum, three?
Four.
A quorum's four?
Yeah.
But there's four, no.
No.
Our quorum, our.
Your quorum's three.
You should have five.
I know, but you only have four, so I think your quorum is three, so you could respond to two. You know what I'm saying, so you know, but it's safer to, to give, um, to, I'm trying to think, you can talk to two people, but then you can't talk to anybody else. But I was gonna say, if you need to send information out, you can have Lorena do that.
Okay.
Because then you're not the person doing it.
Okay, so would it have been, so next time I could say, hey Lorena, will you please forward this newspaper article to the.
Yes, or to the chair, just have, or the cemetery committee or to Lisa.
Or Lisa or Doran.
If you want everybody to have.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know how to do these things right, so please speak up and help me out, you know, the system.
Anyone will let us know.
Yeah. And the thing is too, the, the email that went out was, um, you know, please respond if you, you know, if you can show up to the meeting. The response was, that it was all that was said and then the big capital, yeah, do not respond, so no, but like, like a reading law violation, but just respond directly to either Lorena or Nina. And make sure, my safest way of doing it, because that email sometimes is funky and it will respond all, I just make a whole brand new email, straight to Lorena or straight to Nina that says, you know, just me and Nina. Or me and Lorena that says, I'll be there. Then that will keep you.
You know what my, my gut is though, my instinct is, come on, give every information to everybody.
But you can't.
More efficient, CC, everybody, so everybody knows what's happening.
That's not the way it goes.
Yeah, I know, I'm not.
I get it, they're trying to avoid a meeting.
And see, the problem with that is that you're, you know, they're, they're gonna, you've been turned, oh, you're making decisions and you have meetings that aren't being posted and it's a violation because you are an official organization, an official.
So do we need to get with the students prior to the 20th?
Yes.
So that's, next thing, I sent out the email, what, um.
Well, Monday I'll be back at school and I'll just call them in and I'll talk to them.
Okay.
And.
And then, so as far as getting their scripts, Anderson's gonna do the scripts for us?
So I'm assuming, and if he's not pulling out, we can, these pages now.
Right.
Was that your impression?
Right, yeah, but if not, you know, if not, I, it's not that hard to write the spiel up.
There are maybe spiels in there.
Yeah, there are, most of them.
Okay, we'll look for.
Yeah, and most of them there are, I was, that's what I was reading stuff to you guys.
Like Wikipedia has, you know, Shattuck and Newhan and Warren, you know.
So today is the.
Can't count on kids.
You wanna hand it to them?
At this point, when it's an Arizona history class, it might be a special project.
But not today.
Not today. Who requires every, so, before fall break every year.
So do we want to, to get with the students, uh, the next week?
Little kid, I could tell, I'm sure it's giving a date.
Okay, so can we have the scripts ready by the 20th? Oh, no, wait, can I do that? Yeah, no, the 19th? No. I don't need to be there, do I?
No.
Well, so is there a day next week that would work really well for everyone? I think it would have to be later than that because.
The script's ready. Yeah, give Anderson the time to do that a week.
Well, you could still meet with the kids, because I can, that's, you know, give them, disseminate the script out to them, because it's the same script to the same kids.
Okay.
So that's not an issue, it's just meeting with them, me making sure that they're still included because some of the kids were, and you know, they want, they need to know ahead of time. Of course. And, um, what is next week? 14, 15? Okay, yeah, so Tuesdays was council meeting, so that wouldn't be good. Uh, Monday would be too soon, um, maybe Thursday after school.
Yeah, I'm thinking the 20th, right?
That's Thursday, yeah.
So do we think we can, do you think the scripts could be done then?
Well, if, if they're not, you're wanting to meet with the kids Thursday, so.
Well, no, I, I'm just feeling like, I mean, I think they need to.
You're right.
The expectations and this is what we expect you to do and this is what, you know, practice.
But if they're not, I don't think we should be with them. You know, even if the scripts aren't ready, you know, we should settle with that, maybe that would be a good time to meet.
Do you think you need to drive them through at least one?
We could give them a pseudo script and say, this is what we're expecting, you think you can do.
They have to know where to go from the cemetery.
Well, that's the thing, um, again, that's, you know, that can be given to them, you know, this is the route you're gonna take, this is, you know, the route to the, of the graves.
Can we walk them?
We could. We could, I want them to meet us at the cemetery, yeah.
Might put some subtle markers for them or something as well.
Um, so does that constitute meeting?
It'll have to be posted, it will have to be posted, yes, and we're gonna hold them there.
Right, so.
It's not necessarily a meeting, but it's a collection of bodies, yes.
And we're all together in the cemetery.
So it has to be noticed.
So we're gonna need to have that, what, of the tour, that's 24, 25, 26, 27.
So which days are we gonna want to do the tours on, that's the other question.
I will, on my calendar, I had us tentatively looking at the 28th and 29th, which is Friday and Saturday. So we're gonna give those two days a go, according to my notes.
Right.
We're happy to, you know, change them. We were gonna try those two days and then we were just gonna be there to support Mrs. Barco in this first part of the event.
Right.
So, but there was no talk of tours in the.
Right.
We were just gonna.
Unless we want to give you a day of the dead. What is the day of the dead?
I don't remember. It said Tuesday, right?
Well, it's a Tuesday.
Well, Tuesday is the first, Wednesday is the second.
Yeah.
Thursday is the third.
So.
How does the public know about this thing?
That's what we're getting at, that's the next thing.
Is advertising?
Yeah, so we can ask for it to be placed on the.
City website?
City website and the lady that's in charge of, who's the lady that does the tourism stuff, of course.
Oh, Heather Andrews now.
And ask Heather to, to put a word out there.
Can I ask who's in charge of the website, or the city, who does we?
Nina.
Is it Nina?
Yeah.
She wanted to work with them?
Sure.
And then our business thing we're working on, we're having a server, but sorry.
I don't know, we could, like, we had to wait till next meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's all we're. Um, all right, so, so do you guys want to do more than those two days to start, like you wanna see how they go and then come back at our first, our next actual meeting?
Right, so what time are we planning?
Yeah.
Okay, so the cemetery is pitch black dark at 7:00. So you can start them at 6:45.
What, 5?
5, but if we're doing a lantern tour, we need a T R. Yeah, but how dark?
How dark is it now?
6:30. So that's, that's the whole thing about the lanterns, that's what makes it cool, is it is pitch black dark and you're just going with the lantern.
Sitting.
Yeah.
So what do you want them?
7:00 is a good time, that's when it's dark, because I, when I zip in there, when I'm running late and I zip in there at 7:00, it's dark. In there. And the, what would be a good idea is like outside the main gate, because we wouldn't only have one gate open, the gate we're at, because you're gonna walk back, you can do the group back. You can have a table there set up with lights, you know, this is the check-in at the front of the cemetery. Does that make sense?
It does, it makes sense, I'm just wondering if it's gonna be too dark. So they won't be able to see much.
Like somebody else would have some lights on.
Well, that's what the lantern is for.
Is that gonna generate enough light to?
Maybe it's.
So by way of DC.
I don't know, I'm just thinking it might be too dark. Unless we, um, we also have handheld lights for them to walk with. Flashlights, and then we get to the grave, use a signature light and then we'll use the lantern for the.
Or they could do, I think it might be too dark.
Right now it's.
It's dark.
Yeah, but I don't know, my light, I don't know, it's a house.
Yeah.
Okay, well, tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday, right?
Tomorrow's Friday, yeah, oh yes, because the stair comes out Saturday.
Yeah, I know, you made me, I had to think about it, she just got there.
So what I can do too is tomorrow, after the football game, I can go to the pitch black dark and I can take that lantern and see that all of the lights.
I just don't want everybody, first, the experience itself, being able to see things in the morning. And then it being really dark.
True. Well, that's why you stay on, that's why you stay on the road. Um, that's why hopefully these graves that we're picking are gonna be on, close enough to the road that we're not gonna have to take them up into anything. That's, that's another, for now, like the lantern tours, if it's daylight tours, it doesn't matter, then you have, you know, we respect the.
That's what I was kind of like, a twilight tour and recover that, we did it that, you know, like an hour before sunset.
But then that takes away the whole thing, and just dropped the whole lantern thing, that's the thing. Because when these lantern tours are done, it's dark, I mean, in other cemeteries.
I know, but I think, you know, other cemeteries that are gravel, inclines, rickety old people.
So whether we start a little bit earlier, like you say, 6:30 and as you start off the path, it's.
By the time it's over. Okay, that is the question. How many tours are you gonna do at night though, so if you're doing, you're gonna end up being late at night anyway, and it's gonna be late.
I don't know, I'm like, where does that need to be dark?
Well, maybe we should meet there.
I think we should try.
Do a video when you do your lantern and you guys will all check it out and see what you think.
I'm, I'm leaving here Saturday, so. Wouldn't be, the alternative is, oh, look at that, it's Saturday, I'll be back Saturday from the X after, Tuesday on Saturday, but I'll be back by night, it's all, the cemetery's Saturday night. I mean, we could meet there.
Yeah.
Oh, we just.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
With that, you have to wait 24 hours.
Well, it can be, it can be noticed, because there's more than enough time, it only has to be noticed 24 hours.
Okay, can we do that?
Yeah. Can you have it noticed for us?
I can, I have to.
That you'll be in there?
Oh, but yeah, it's okay, I mean, the rest of us will walk it, so.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, so Saturday night?
Yeah, let's do Saturday night.
The Saturday?
Yes. If they can notice that so we don't get in trouble for meeting. What time do you guys want to meet there, 6:50?
6:00 is a possibility.
6:00. So, yeah, okay, just so we can kind of test around, I just, the experience is that especially, like, especially for these students, they need to have, um, anywhere to know where they're going, otherwise they, they really don't know.
So right now, I believe, um, city of Bisbee does have a Facebook page.
Yes.
So maybe we can advertise after that, or in the meantime, until we're ready to get our.
So the next question then too is, um, how do they pay and when do they pay? And how much are we gonna charge? What's an advert?
How much money? Where do you find the same two, the other day?
City, the city can start an account for you, and you guys can put it into it.
But you, we can also do a, uh, let me stutter, um, like a Venmo, you know how you have that, you can do a Venmo account.
Does the city have?
No, but you can transfer that money from that Venmo account to the City of Bisbee, I think that's legal.
We'd have to set one up.
We have to check, or the city might be able to, she might be able to set the Venmo account, and then all you do is quote it.
As long as they have Venmo, as long as they are using Venmo.
Yeah, but yeah, and if not, there's also the Q, uh, QR codes also can transfer money, a lot of times too, so that would be something we'd have to ask.
So, I think we also have to have, some people have no technology.
Right.
And so we'd be able to take cash and.
Right.
You guys have funds, right? This committee has funds, I should be able to get a cash box, like, for a pool, any cash, and then you guys just turn the same amount in, and you do the balance sheet, that's it.
Yeah, and that's why we need to have someone at the table, that information table at the gate, and so you can also have, you know, there's, um, sliders, you could have, like, those pukes. Right, but if we did an account, so I'm just trying to think, we'd have to ask if they can do, or do Apple accounts or something, and just transfer half, the transaction receipts, and where the receipts of the transaction.
When you guys advertise, just put it out, Venmo, and what you can use to pay for the promo.
We could ask, um, Carrie, hello? How they do other, other things.
Okay.
Yeah, like, is she gonna be there by?
I am off, but I can get ahold of her.
Oh, I'm.
She isn't on Fridays.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll hold it, don't forget, so go to City.
I'm writing it down.
So, Carrie, you're gonna manage the bios?
I'm gonna get the bios from Anderson to Johnny at the school for the kids.
And then, so you're gonna work with the city on the.
That, yes.
Joe, you're gonna help us out with, like, money, money, we're all gonna meet Saturday, that's just being a simple, I mean.
Sure, and we, we probably make, that's what the cost is gonna be though, before we ever get there.
So, what, I mean, what is, how would you pay?
How much are?
My God, a London ghost tour, those things are like fifty bucks, you know, like forty, twenty.
Yeah, well, history there.
Right, yeah. So, uh.
At twenty-five?
Five dollars?
I'd say that, I mean, the mine tours fourteen bucks or something, so.
I think that's fair.
I mean, we could have, just getting started.
Yeah, it's our first, you know.
As we get better.
Because we're specific.
How much do you think is fair?
Oh, well, Johnny, it's the first tour, we got eight graves, I don't know, am I, am I?
Yeah.
It's always better to take small bites first, right? It's always better to take small bites first.
Yeah, but, I don't know, I could do ten.
Did you pay ten dollars to go to eight graves?
Um, I paid.
Well, yeah, I think, I think for scenes around here, you know, I think ten, okay?
I mean, how much is a ghost tour, so that's.
I have no idea, those are more.
One and ten. So, so is ten below, I mean, that's a good thing, if it's below, I think, 'cause it's our first go.
Yeah, I mean, ten, I think ten is reasonable.
We also do that. Ten's good.
Yeah, but you need math in your head.
I can't get it.
Count the needle layer, times by ten.
And then, and the time is going to be determined after we meet Saturday, so it'll probably work with.
But we do need to, well, if we're gonna start advertising right now, we need to decide, first tour, I think, because pitch black, I think we're gonna, to just.
Do the, 'cause some people cannot see.
Yeah, I know, I know, but.
As one last.
But if we're, yeah, I know, but I'm saying, if that's the case, then we shouldn't even do lantern tours, because we're gonna run out of time, because if we're, if we're doing half-hour tours, how, that's the other thing, how many tours are getting you a night? Only two tours, or three tours, or?
Uh, if you've got five kids, and they're starting fifteen minutes behind each other.
And we start at, say, six even, that's gonna put us into seven thirty.
You figure an hour is gonna get through five groups, essentially, right? And in one hour, you're gonna have five groups that. Does that, does that sound right? Am I thinking of that correctly?
Um, I can't think like that, I have to, sorry.
Okay, so.
So you've got five? Five kids.
And then you start fifteen minutes after.
And they're coming in fifteen minutes.
So, so you start at six, so six fifteen, six, six fifteen, six thirty, six forty-five, seven.
That's one tour, and then seven o'clock is gonna take forty-five minutes?
No, what do you mean, that's what, that would be five tours, it's been one every fifteen.
But that's just one cycle.
Yeah, that's what I mean, one cycle, yeah, well, that's if we just did five.
Cause we're, I, I don't know, I mean, we could start, the first person could start a second tour, but we're essentially, like, what time do we have to be out of there?
Yeah, that's, that's what, oh.
We have the keys. Cause those last groups are gonna be in the dark anyway if we start at six. Cause if we started at seven. I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that.
I think six would probably be good, it's, it's already dark, and then as you go, it's gonna get darker, and.
And that gives us enough time to, to run all of the groups through. I mean, how do you get out of there?
I got an idea.
And they're not, and they only have one.
What about when you advertise for it, you could say, tours at six will be, you know, at seven, when it's dark, we'll do the lantern, and then people would know if they wanted to, like, that way people might have bad vision or something. Or younger people wanna go spooky.
But the thing is, even at six, though, it's already, it's already dark enough for lanterns, I mean, but it's not pitch black dark, like seven. I mean, cause when I'm closing, when I, the sun is already behind the mountain at five thirty, when I go.
Yeah.
And I'm kinda standing there, doing my little toe-tap, you know, and by quarter till, it's already getting dusk.
So, if the last group starts at seven, we're gonna finish at eight forty?
Yeah. If we, yeah, yeah, that's if we have that, that last group.
Cause you can't have them running side of things.
Well, every fifteen minutes.
Right, but that is, if I'm, if I'm group number one, and I do my, you know, my tour, I can't really start a second group with people.
Until fifteen minutes after the last person.
Still gotta get started. Soon as they're there.
But they're not gonna, yeah, I know, but they'll, yeah, but then they'll be, that'll give them the break to wait, and they'll start behind the line, before we have to get this tour, it's gonna be fun.
Old Bisbee ghost tours are twenty bucks, so we're still undercutting it.
That's good.
No, but what I'm saying is, yeah, when number one starts, and they're gonna get through in half an hour, um, that's forty-five minutes, okay, so that's still, so there, the others are gonna already have gone, but they'll just, that'll give them a break, though. That, that may even give them, you know, so much of a half-hour break, get a drink or something.
We need six. Six.
We'll have to logistically do it on a, on a piece of paper.
Yeah, okay, all right, so that's good, so we're gonna be Saturday at six?
Yeah, we're, so we're gonna ask if I could borrow that map, 'cause I can look at that for you guys, which one they're right on the road.
We just return it to the staff, so.
I wanna, I wanna tell a picture.
And that came out of the S, uh, the big one that has all the S and T.
Yeah, this is the one I have, uh, but it's, they have, the one at the cemetery.
Yeah, 'cause I have, 'cause I'm thinking, I was like, what on the website, they start with K and P and stuff, but there are numbers in here, these codes, like.
And there's also on this.
Maybe somewhere I can reach that.
On this app, it tells me.
And then I can see K, or I see it's around the road, or this is not on the road, maybe we don't wanna do a tour.
And we'll have to get that for people.
From that one, to strike.
This one, it's two or three.
Yeah, this, yeah, it tells you, look, the Catholics and the whole.
Wow. Yeah, I need to get a picture of the.
Bunch of them.
They do.
Sectioned, right?
They said you can't start the.
Yeah.
And there's L, and that's what they are on the.
See, then there's all sorts of names.
Cause then you're not.
I mean, there's. I think we should keep the stuff together, for now, just, I'll focus on these people to tell you guys, um, 'cause they're, I'm just thinking, you, you may have to switch some people out, if some of these folks are in the middle or at the block, that's not on the road.
Or way back in the bushes.
Yeah, that's all.
And there's a whole bunch of really cool, the really cool old early people that are on the road, I've seen their stuff.
Okay.
On that first street, that's where all the huge ornate headstones are, and they were in, a lot of them, yeah, what kind of?
Yeah.
But that also breaks it down into the main section, the Catholic section, the Royal Order of Blues, and all that, yada, which would be a good way to make different varying tours.
Yeah. All right, um, can you think of anything else at this point, until we meet and?
Um, what would be a, a way to not break open meeting hours, to communicate with you guys, if we have to change people on this list, because they're not.
Just give it to Lisa.
Just, just, I'll go directly to Lisa, okay, and Lisa, you're a smart lady, she knows, she'll figure it out. She's been in leadership positions for a long time.
So, we on the old business number two?
I, I don't know, I guess.
Oh, the wildlife, that'd be fast. Um, so, uh, I just let them know, please start thinking of what is your, um, vision of our collaboration, they, they definitely want the cemetery to be on the tour next fall. So I think that's where we're all heading, you know, and then, so I told them that I would ask you guys to, just, we don't have to do it now, I'll make sure that gets on the next agenda, or probably the one after that, 'cause I might not make the November meeting.
Okay. So, when's the next, do we have a meeting in?
We have a meeting, each time we wanna have a meeting.
What do you think, yeah?
Um, I come back, it's so silly, it's, uh, that first week in November, I gotta go take care of a friend, so it's November fourth, the meeting, I, I won't make it, I'll be there.
The next weekend is also July.
We won't be here.
We won't. Um, but, and then the third weekend is that Thanksgiving?
Yeah, so pretty busy till, thanks, through November, early December, if you guys wanna meet again.
Because we need to talk about that, as far as what they're, like, how, how's that gonna work?
Yeah.
We need to start thinking about that, planning for that now, if we're thinking about.
Getting full advantage of that, yeah, making sure.
That's a good, uh. But I can.
Yeah.
Other than that's, uh.
There's one before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the week of the fourteenth?
Yeah, we'll get a fourteenth then.
So we could have a meeting on the fourteenth? Other people are gonna be up, so we're gonna have one on the.
Okay, we can also, November fourteenth, November.
Oh, what, the third of November?
Um, seventeenth. November seventeenth, I, I'm hoping.
Uh, sure.
And probably, uh, the fifteenth or the seventeenth, or maybe not fifteenth, fourteenth or seventeenth, what do you guys think, Monday or Thursday?
I just can't do the sixteenth, yeah.
So the seventeenth, is that looking for you?
This looks okay.
Yeah, I think that is nice, 'cause it's consistent with our Thursdays, so five thirty, cemetery.
So we need to ask that, because that's other, another issue, we can ask for that date, but it may not be available.
Might not, I don't.
So, it's happening, won't be the first for us.
Oh, we're like, this room's not available?
The regular standard one is not on the third of the month?
Oh, it is, oh, it is, okay.
We are gonna have one on the third, okay, so, okay, sorry, but you said you're not gonna be there?
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here on the third, but you guys could still meet and do everything.
We need to be here for that.
For the wildlife.
So we put it up, put the collaborator, we'll send it, but then do everything else on the other one.
Okay, so, so if we could have on the seventeenth, if we can have a, another meeting?
A special session for wildlife.
Yeah. Special session for wildlife, Bisbee Wildlife?
Project.
Project?
Yeah. So I, I asked them to please cruise by the cemetery and start thinking of what their vision is, um, Danforth, the guy's name is, commented that he really was impressed with my plot with the wildflowers, and so I'm just, in my mind, thought, oh, Memorial Day, we hand out marigold seeds, paid for by the Project Wildlife, and I figure Memorial Day isn't that a big, we're gonna be there during flags anyways, or, you know, we do stuff anyways on Memorial Day.
Veterans Day awards.
And then, uh.
Veterans Day memorial.
Not later.
Day of the Dead.
Um, sometimes you guys do a Christmas brief.
Oh, the briefs, the reads across America.
That's in November too?
No, December, December seventeenth. That needs to be on our agenda.
It is, um, December seventeenth.
Yeah, next, for the November meeting, the regular meeting on November third, needs to have, um, discussion of reads across America, is Grace still doing it?
Grace and myself.
Oh, you are doing it too?
Yes.
That is, okay, so that's gonna be your topic. And then the seventeenth is our special session for Project Wildlife.
So December seventeenth is Reads Across America, November, you guys, and we can talk more about it, 'cause that would be the appropriate time, without breaking open meeting rules, laws.
And then on the third, if we can also have a, on our agenda, a debrief of the tour, that was one of the things we wanted to talk about, to see, like, how much money we made.
How did it go?
I don't know, yes, what went well, what didn't go well, if we have to change. So, how do you feel about the idea of just localizing, you know, where currently is cut, that takes us.
Yeah.
And it takes the pressure off the city too.
I'm worried that by the time we get there, the front's gonna need to be done more than two.
I know, absolutely.
I, for this, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, 'cause it's not.
Cause it'll be low enough, but just not as pretty.
If it's dark.
You go back to the princess of the dark, or?
Yes, awesome, this is what I wanted.
I, I don't know if I have any more of those.
No, I will not lose it, I'll make photo copies.
No, that was like, go back into this.
Yeah, perfectly, yes. I think that's very valuable, I guess.
No, do we have any more of those?
I don't know if they all burned it up, but you might be able to ask them, and they might, how many of the coffee machines are there at the city hall? Or just take it to, take it to Staples, or what's one out there, Alan's, sorry, tasty, yeah, and get some.
Hang on, and then we'll do this when we come back together Saturday, or whatever, I, I can take it and make us copies.
Oh, yeah, they're out there.
Yeah, it's kind of cool, um, okay, so we've got our topics for the next agenda.
Wait, we got.
On eleven-three, discussion of Reads Across America for twelve-seventeen, and tour debriefing, how did it go?
Right, and, um, we've got our plans for Saturday, we've got kind of things we're gonna look for.
Didn't you have on the agenda columbariums?
We do, that's new business.
Oh, sorry.
Are we good with the, we're all squared away with number two?
Yeah, I'm gonna use the, the web, the Bisbee website and this, just make sure they're on the road, 'cause I think our, our list may change, probably will, okay?
Yeah, you'd be pretty lucky if you got it nice.
Right, you're gonna.
Walking around.
Yeah, for now, you know, to start with, and make it easier.
Make it easier. So take it down to all three. Have one thing.
Now, there's, there's others that'll fit in, but anyway.
And I'll call you if I can, 'cause I thought that needs to happen pretty quick, and already.
Commander, can you? I can't, most of our tires.
Okay, so we're, so we're good with all business?
Yep, um, do we have to vote on that item?
No, no, you don't vote it.
Nothing, there's nothing we live to, special question.
We're a work session, so you're talking.
Okay, excellent, I like work sessions. Okay, so new business, discussion on columbarium.
Okay, so, um, this is something you guys are gonna need to maybe bring up on the next meeting, but, I talked to the city, city manager again today, and the mayor, and we were talking about, um, the columbariums and such, um, and a suggestion that was made for you guys to think about, and to put forward to city council, is, since the sexton houses are eerie, they're done, I mean, they're bad news, they're not gonna be fixed, they're just dilapidated beyond repair, the sexton houses, those are the, the little houses next to the ice plant.
Oh, okay.
The suggestion for you to think about is, that maybe we should bring someone in and have it scraped, level them out, bring in the modular buildings, and make that a columbarium.
Big, that area.
No, 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 bring in.
A modular?
Modular building, and make that modular building the housing for columbariums, like a, um, a cremation hill house.
Okay, yeah, I think that, I think that would be more. Considering you just wanna be able to see what it is, you know, I mean, when you're talking about a modular building, I'm talking about something like this.
Well, it doesn't have to be exactly this, but a building, yeah, a modular is just easy.
Permanency.
It would be permanent, yeah, it would, it'd be, it would be a building that would be there, I, I say modular, because you don't have to have it built, I mean, they bring them in, they put it on a foundation, it becomes a, a regular.
So I'm assuming there are companies that, for the specific.
Prefab?
Prefab, it's a prefab building, yes.
Like, for the specific purpose?
No, the, the building is, is immaterial, a room, it's, the columbariums are, um, blocks of drawers, and those can just be brought inside, and if people wanna buy a columbarium, you can actually have a place outside also, but, um, the inside building makes them more protected.
Okay, I would wanna see what that was gonna look like.
I was thinking if it was gonna be an outdoor one, we could probably combine efforts with the wildlife, um, maybe, because if you think about it, um, the cemeteries are also for the living, and you wanna have somewhere peaceful.
Right, so columbariums on the outside that I've seen, um, have been, um, metal structures, what else were they made out of, Lisa, what else are columbariums, external?
Well, they don't have to, you don't have to have a building to house it.
Right, the glass ones.
Marble or stone.
Marble or stone, yeah.
That's the cost that Ken and Steve are probably trying to.
Right, but, you know, there's some fairly reasonables out there, though, when you look at the prices, but the inside of the building ones are the ones that have glass, you know, so, um, but I don't know, that's kind of scary, you know, because of vandalizing, and one of the things I've talked to them about is, is where my grandparents are in Turner, Tucson. Oh, you have a code. Oh, you have a code to get into the building. And, um, so you just get the code, and if you forget the code, as a family member, then you can contact city hall and they can tell you the code, and they reset the code regularly up there. Um, so that's an easy way, that's a, for really fancy schmancy glass fronted ones, so those are, you know, in there. But they had just, you know, brought that up as an idea, you know, that might be it somewhere if you want to do internal columbariums. But again, the columbariums I saw in New York were the, they were the black marble and the brown, I would honestly say, it was almost like gold brown marble. They're beautiful, you know, and they can be single or they can be double deep.
See, I think this is a great idea because you, you run out of space, I mean, that's the inevitable thing about cemeteries.
And I think.
And spread the pot out.
Well, and the thing is too, not everybody's, um, like in my family, my father is going to be, um, in a casket. My mother just chose cremation, so the only choice we have is to bury her in the ground, whereas we could do a, possibly do a columbarium. You know, that would be an option, I could do a columbarium at the site also that was secure that could not be removed. Um, and then she could be internally columbariumed, right, yeah. That's just, I'm just using it as an option.
I think that's a, I think the concept is really good.
I haven't looked at the statistics, but it seems like more people are doing cremation.
But, I mean, it's still good to maybe do a survey from that on the website too, just to see what.
Probably interested, if people are interested, would you be interested in a columbarium?
That's a great idea.
Survey.
Do it.
Right, well, there's been.
And that, and, and we have areas, we have areas that are not used necessarily, small areas, that you could set up like a, a pot of columbariums and, and, I mean, that's not.
See, this is a perfect thing to put on those grids. Right. I mean, and I, I envision something, you know, where you could put like a, a bird bath and.
Well, they had it around Quay Pond, one of them was though.
Yeah, yeah, so that's awesome. Peaceful, somewhere to sit, somewhere to reflect.
That hill at the end where.
Or the bedrock, that can be.
Exactly. Put in, a beautiful curved wall, right, and then, you know, that's.
With a bird bath.
Then trees, that's, that's a whole desert landscaping.
See, if you look at those, like in terms of grand writing, you can think of that section. Yeah. You know, that becomes one of the projects, one of the phases of whatever that you want, write for, we can, we can do that.
Right.
So we just have to have a really clear vision of what that is going to be.
Yeah, so that's just something, something's around there, but, but it was offered, you know, the, the think about, you know, um, if you're wanting to do something closed also. There's that opportunity, because the sexton buildings are, they're not going to be able to fix them, they're so damaged.
Are they good?
Why are the sextons?
Well, there used to be a guy, it was the caretaker, he lived there.
Are the houses way up behind?
No, no, you know where the ice plant is, the big building, it's those little bit, it looks like garages right next to it, and it would be right there and they connect into the cemetery. So they're already connected in, but it's something to think of, okay.
And we could look at them all.
Yeah, so check those out, they're by the ice plant. Yeah, they're the small, they look like garages, and they're often kind of caved, the doors kicked down and such, anyway, so.
Good idea, that's good.
And that, and that's part of the cemetery, it's probably.
Yeah, it is.
And, but ice plant is not.
No.
Interesting.
Do we ever look at, um, purchasing that eventually?
I think that's announced about multiple times in the cell, it's a lot interesting. Okay, maybe ask fifty years from now. We'll be here.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah.
We might outlast whoever's. There, no.
Not that it's.
That's it?
I think that's it. Any other topics that we want to have on the agenda for the next?
Remember cards.
Trees, maybe? Is it trees?
Discussion on trees.
Discussion on trees.
Because we already talked about grass, unless you want to, you guys want to approach the gra, um, equipment again.
That's.
The grass, uh, so.
Grass slash.
Purchasing equipment.
Purchasing equipment, yeah, that's a good way.